Seven o'clock, February fifth, twenty twenty five. This is the Marion Planning Commission.
Evening, Bill.
My lane and way may go by the wayside here in the bottom.
For me, anyway.
Yeah, it's it's fun. They seem like the like.
Would to be a business came back. I'm Brian, Communitarian Director. You're?
Steve.
Stephen.
Okay, Steve, yeah, we talked on the phone. Oh, it's good to meet you in person.
Meet you too.
Yeah, Steve, um, how this goes is simple stuff. I want to do a short presentation of the plat. Planning Commission will ask if you have anything to say, anything to add to what I've said. Um, and then they may, and then they may ask you a question or two. So, I'll do my presentation, they'll ask me questions, and Chair will ask, if they want to say anything. If you want, just go up to stand with Mike, say, Steve, and all the address, and my number, and just if you want to add something to what I'm saying, great. Or if you just say, hey, if you guys didn't get any questions, I'll stand and ask you any questions. Again, it should be really straightforward for you. I will have a plat up on the screen. So, they've already seen the plat, they got the staff reports and all that stuff. The Chair will, the Chair will ask, okay? It was nice to see, meet you in person. Hey, Cole, just. Yeah, it's okay. Hey, uh, after the meeting, I'll, I'll just come and just tell.
He looks familiar.
I've been to a couple of these.
Have you?
Yeah, it's Billy Crohn's.
Anyway, I'm Stephen Gollum. I've never been to one.
Brian. Nice to meet you, Steve. I'm about the only citizen of Marion who comes to this meeting without.
You just got to check it out.
Check it out, share with my neighbors.
Excellent. Never hurts to be current.
Never hurts to be current.
I'll call the order, the February fifth, twenty twenty five Marion Planning Commission meeting. Please, you join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, we stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, under God, indivisible, with the love of justice for all.
Nancy Lee Cole.
Yes, Bill Bailey.
Here.
Nina Dillon, here. Mitchell Fowler. Rose Harmon. Kelsey Combe, here. Sarah Limbacher, here. Sean McConnell.
Here.
Daniel Malina. Thank you.
Commission members have received a copy of the minutes for December the fourth, twenty twenty four meeting. Are there any comments or corrections? Hearing none. Is there a motion for approval?
I motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Next order of business is election of officers. Mr. Dyer, will you explain the election of officers project?
I'm Brian, our Communitarian Director, meeting Commissioners and Chair. Real quick, obviously, considering the other staff will endeavor to keep this brief as soon as possible, make sure it gets home safely. In regards to election of officers, typically, they redo this at the last part of the meeting. However, you are currently without a secretary, and one of the duties of the secretary is to endorse and sign plats. And so, since the two items on the CV's agenda, excuse me, two of the items on the CV's agenda are plats, we have moved the election of officers to the top of the agenda. So, the process is, there is, your biologists do not have a specific stated process, i.e., it doesn't say you have to elect officers as a slate or one at a time. In my years of being here at the Planning Commission, typically, I elect someone as a slate, so typically, there's not a motion to approve the slate of officers. That means all of the officers, all at the same time. But again, you can do them separately and one at a time. Your current officers are, Bill Bailey is your president, Sean McConnell is your vice chair. Again, as I mentioned earlier, Ruben Code Meyer was your secretary, he's obviously now in some chances, so you wouldn't wonder that. Responsibilities of those folks generally are, the president serves as the person who presides over the meetings, also serves as the main contact to staff on issues, a variety of issues and things like that. A great example is an issue whether or not we would have an in-person meeting or online meeting, so that's a good example of that. Obviously, the vice chair serves at the president's place if the president's not able to attend or was unable to carry on the duties. And then the secretary is the individual who is responsible for publications and things like that, however, staff does take care of all those publications. We put the secretary's name on there, but that is something we do. And then the secretary also, along with the president, is responsible for endorsing the plat. So, you all approve a plat, City Council accepts the rights, ways, and easements on the plat. One of the steps following that process is that the Chair, um, Chair comes in and signs the plat as well as the secretary signs the plat. So, those are the responsibilities of, of, generally, again, of those three officers. You happy to answer any questions? Otherwise, I'll open it up to you all to make some recommendations for your officers.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment in regards to that. I have no issue being the secretary. I do want to propose that I no longer be vice chair. And the reason being, there were some conversations with the mayor, because I am currently the chair of the Public Art Committee. He didn't want people to be in a position to be chair of two different committees. And if something were to occur, where you're not here, I could end up being chair of two different committees. So, I'd like to see one of these other individuals be vice chair, but I'm more than happy to be secretary. I don't see any conflicts there, so.
Good.
And I like you as chair, so I'm perfectly open. You're willing to continue to sit in that position.
Thank you. I appreciate your support. Any input from the people? Who would you nominate for vice chair?
I would pick one of those two on the end who've been here the longest.
I think I'm vice chair on the BZA, so.
You're vice chair of BZA, but I think the BZA meets so infrequently, um, that, and again, if that was going to be true, I apologize. Um, it does meet so infrequently. I appreciate the mayor's concern and the mayor's conversations with Commissioner McConnell, so I don't think that would be the same conversation with you and the mayor of BZA.
I think you'd be good, but you have, if you're longer, you have a better background in the city and will be done in the past, so you'll continue that forward.
Looks like you won by default.
Okay. So.
So, with that, I'd make a motion for Bill to be the chair, Cole to be the vice chair, and I could do the secretary position.
Second?
I have a second.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Take this time. Thank you very much for your support. We will continue to move forward, and Brian will keep me on the straight and narrow. Okay. We have two pieces of business tonight. We have PA two four dash zero 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 five, Engle Estates, final plat. A final plat, property located in fifty one fifty six and fifty two oh six eight street in an R one single-family residential district. Mr. Dyer, you have a staff presentation, please.
This application was the next application, or kind of something we're starting to see trickle in a little bit more, applications where properties are taking the opportunity to have larger lots subdivided down into smaller lots. Again, both those lots and both these spots still have good-sized lots on them, and to provide opportunity for more building, single-family homes within the city. So, again, both these are examples of things we're seeing more of in, in, as staffers. So, this evening, this evening, this plat is located at fifty, fifty two oh six and fifty one fifty six eight street. The thing, main thing I wanted to point out, this is actually quite interesting, is from the old South Park plat, it's one of our original plats, like, from eighteen eighty seven, is how these properties are still flattered. This piece here, you can see the property line here, is old right-of-way for, I believe, I think it was, I can't remember what the street was called.
Ida.
Ida, thank you, Ida Street. So, this is old right-of-way for Ida Street, and this is actually a plot of a lot that the property owner and the applicant that Street Val is owns. So, he owns both of these properties. This property previously had a house on it for a number of years, back in two thousand twelve, after the city's prodding the property owner, then property owner, who is not the applicant, demolished that house. It still had the accessory structure on it, which you see right here. Staff pursued the then-property owner to get rid of that accessory structure, I mean, obviously did not before they sold him to the current property owner. They didn't feel at the time that it was necessary to pursue the current property owner in regards to that, especially considering the plans that they have for the property. So, again, it's interesting how this is vacated right-of-way and was then subsequently developed. But the applicant now has, as I mentioned earlier, owns both of these properties, and is looking to subdivide his current lot and the other vacated right-of-way into two lots that mean are R one zoning designation, which is what the both properties are zoned. Uh, the two lots would be approximately twenty-one thousand square feet and twenty-three thousand square feet, so again, very good-sized lots. But our standard size for, our standard required lot size is ten thousand square feet for R one. The lots would be, one would be seventy-five by two seventy-five, so seventy-five feet by two hundred and seventy-five feet, and the other would be about eighty-five by two hundred and seventy-five feet. There's existing right-of-way on Hayes, so we don't need any additional right-of-way. Hayes is a city-standard street. Both these lots will take access from, from Hayes, and both of them will have single-family homes. We'll add that the existing single-family home, and I showed them the aerial, that's located just about here, that is going to remain, he does not have plans to demolish it, and he will be building a new home on lot two. So, they are dedicating the easements that were here, feel necessary for this to, for this replat, and that I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The only one I had, or just thought I had just now, obviously, in the consideration of the redesign of those two plats, one is getting smaller, one's getting bigger, and those setbacks that you mentioned are relative to where that existing house and structure is to provide the seven-foot.
Excellent question. We did have the applicant survey provide us the existing conditions to do that exact in our houses, and when the new property line is put in place, the existing home will be obviously set back a group length.
Any other questions for staff? Any further question? Okay. Does the applicant, is the applicant here? Do you wish to make any presentation? If you do, move to the podium, or state your name, address, and telephone number, please.
My name is Stephen. My name is Stephen E. Golla, my address is five one five six Hayes Street, Marion, Kansas, six six two zero three.
What else did you need? Is that?
Phone number.
Oh, nine one three nine seven two six three two four. Is that everything? Is, okay. Well, I've never done this before. This is the first time I've been involved in anything like this. And as far as a meeting like this, as well as a replating of land, and I guess what I would like to do is thank everybody for their time. And I think the fact that you guys start with the pledge, the pledge of allegiance is incredible. As a citizen, I'll be even more happy to stay where I am. The, the existing lot, the lot that my house is on now, it was my grandmother's home. I've literally been a Marion kid my whole life, and I bought the home for my grandmother when she went into assisted living, so. There's a lot of history in the, in the two lots and houses, my, the people, the generation that built the home that I live in, the next generation of, of everybody, all the families involved are going to build the new home. It's just a cool little piece of history, and I am grateful for the opportunity, hope you guys see it as one as well, and I don't really have anything else to say except for thank you.
Thank you. Commission, do you have any additional questions for staff? Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll move that the Planning Commission approved the conditions listed in the Stafford Board for PA twenty-four dash zero 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 five. Engala Estates, final plat for property generally located at fifty one fifty six and fifty two zero six Hayes Street, and forwarding the plat to the City Council for the acceptance of easements dedicated by the plat.
Next step, ready?
I stated that at the very beginning of it, yes.
Did you hear that, sorry, Sean?
Yep, no problem.
You have a second? You have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, moving on to the next business. It's PA two five zero 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 one, South Park Edition, number one, final plat, a final plat for the property located in eighty eight oh two West Forty-Ninth Street in an R one single-family resident district. Mr. Dyer.
Again, very similar to our previous plat, again, another lot of good size, this also had a home on it for a number of years. This is also another one that the city pursued for being in disrepair to get demoed. Back in twenty twelve, the home was demoed, the lot's been vacant since then, recently acquired by the current property owner, and the current property owner is requesting a replat for the purposes of subdividing property into two billable lots. I'll put it off on the screen there. Again, they meet the required bulk and size requirements for an R one zoning district. They're thirteen, both of them are approximately thirteen thousand square feet in size, dedicates the appropriate easements that staff is looking for, for, for the plat. And again, it's R one zone, so it'll be single-family homes, based on each one, each one of the lots will be the appropriate construction type of property building for the lot. So, you happy to answer any questions? And I do believe the applicant is present as well.
Commission, do you have any questions from staff?
I'm trying to pull up, I'm trying to pull up the document itself, but I'm out of trouble. What, what's the width dimension on each of those?
Seventy-five, seventy-five, yeah. I, I do remember this one, because this is one we've had lots of discussions with lots of people, and it was always, I think it's one fifty, but you're going to have your survey, you're telling me it's one fifty. So, yeah, it says seventy-five, so they're, excuse me, it was totaled one fifty, and so they're able to subdivide down to seventy-five, which is the metal block width for R one.
Close call.
That's what we, we'd always tell folks, we think it is, but you need to have your survey or confirm.
Thank you.
Is that applicant here?
Yes.
Do you wish to address the commission?
Um, just hold for the approval.
Okay. Does commission have any questions for you? Any further questions for the staff, commission? Hearing none.
Do you have a motion?
What's that?
Do you have any further motion? Yes. I do that the planning commission approved PA twenty-five zero 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 one, South Park Edition, number one, final plat, for the property generally located at eighty eight oh two West Forty-Ninth Street, and forwarding the plat to the City Council for the acceptance of easements dedicated by the plat.
Second? Did you say staff?
No, we're not.
You're in the staff.
No, we're not in the staff, okay. Thank you. I have a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, next order of business, comprehensive plan annual review. Mr. Dyer.
So, again, comprehensive plan, a current one was adopted in March of twenty twenty one. Per state statute, each year, the Planning Commission shall review the comprehensive plan. Since twenty twenty one, we've done a number of additional area plans that serve as that review of the complans, that, of those area plans, such as Marion Connected, Downtown Marion Drive, Mobile American, all pool of Americas, moving all or area plans in which we utilize and review the comprehensive plan. So, for twenty twenty four, we didn't have any of those types of events happen, so that's why we're bringing forward to you this evening, this memo, to kind of go through the things that the city's done that have really fit with our comprehensive plan. So, again, I'll briefly touch on them. They're all, they are contained in, within your memo. So, for the key goals, the first one of the comprehensive plan, of our current comprehensive plan is housing choice and diversity.
Do you want to share that on the screen, or do you have?
I did not put that on the screen.
Okay, so I just, for anybody in the audience, apologize, yeah, I did not, um, did not, um, actually, I can, I can do it, I'm sorry. I don't feel so alone when I'm digging around on the city website.
Yeah, it's, uh, I've got it to, just go straight to council for, maybe go straight to the calendar, but it's, it works away from me to get there. So, thank you. Make sure you're, you're honoring me there. So, again, key goals are listed there, down there, the first two, and then obviously the next page, housing choice and diversity, I'm going to go through each one of those bullet points. But I think a couple of things that are important to point out is, one, the council approved the short-term rental ordinance, and then also, just a little bit of my thunder for my closing comments, is that this council did also adopt the ordinance allowing for accessory dwelling. So, those are two examples of how we're working towards housing choice and diversity, obviously, these places that you had this evening before you, also a great example, as well as Marion Red stations with the multifamily, that, another excellent example of housing choice and diversity. Next one is neighborhood reinvestment. So, and since we adopted the current comprehensive plan, the city has invested almost one point two million dollars in grants for our neighborhoods. They come in the form, many different forms, but I think the ones that folks are most familiar with are residential exterior grant, as well as sustainability grants. We also do tax, we also do tax, property tax rebates for the city portion of property tax for folks who need income guidelines. So, we do a number of things, the council does a number of things towards that. Next one is public services. So, we've done a number, the council and Planning Commission have done a number of things towards that. I think probably the two big ones here I would point out is Advent Health Cancer Center has been completed, as well as the Marion Plaza Library. That was a library in particular, was a significant joint cooperation, collaboration between the city and the library board to get the library located, or buyer, excuse me, Marion Community Center. It's been a great asset, it's really been very, so, SISX, SISX. It's been a great asset. It's really been very, so, sisex, sisex. Um. Identity and character.
Thank you.
Brian, what's the improvement through capital?
Brian.
So through, uh, that also is part of each year, you all review, as well as the city council approve the capital improvement program. That's the five-year CIP. So within the five-year CIP, that is the document that identifies the capital improvement program, street improvements. Probably the biggest thing, folks see all of that, um, in regards to, uh, public, providing quality of public services.
So those are three, approved three.
Three of them. So there's been three of them. Three, we've approved, the council and planning commission has approved and reviewed three capital. So each year, each year there's a new capital improvement plan. So that's what it is.
Excuse me for that.
No, Brian, follow me. No, that's fine. Um, so again, identity and character, um, Marion Plaza Library, Marion Grand Station, obviously, the big thing, um, in regards to that. Mixed-use and commercial activity centers, um, the Plaza Library and Marion Grand Station, uh, as well as the Mercedes-Benz facility, new facility that's occurred, uh, other facilities. Sustainable growth, all of those developments all incorporate, um, sustainable, uh, qualities. Um, probably Marion Grand Station is the best example of that, with the ability to do, uh, really add solar panels to that project. With solar panels, that would be on that significant canopy portions in, in the middle, as well as a number of EV charging stations that are there, um, be located, uh, on the site. And then transportation, safety and mobility, um, again, I touched on it earlier, but the city's done a number of transportation plans, a couple of corridor plans, as well as Mobile Marion, which was the city's first, uh, multi-mobile plan, i.e. the city's first point to look at transportation needs of users other than vehicles. So, um, staff certainly feels like, uh, there's no need to update the comprehensive plan at this time. Feels that it's really served the city quite well. We can see a number of things that occurred, um, based upon that plan. Obviously, probably the most, best example is Marion Grand Station. So that, be happy to answer any questions, otherwise, and staff will just be looking for a motion for the planning commission to accept this report.
Any further questions for Brian? Bearing none, is there a motion to approve comprehensive plan update, sorry?
I motion to approve the comprehensive plan update.
We have a, a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? None? Mr. Dyer?
Yeah, so, uh, we'll just wrap up this evening, just to do a quick rundown, uh, kind of two big things I wanted to mention to the, um, planning commission is, first of all, as I said earlier, the city council adopted the A U ordinance, as you all did a lot of work on, reviewed, sent forward to them. They did not make any changes to that. Uh, the city council expressed, is there, um, appreciation of all your efforts on that? So that, well, um, it'll be interesting to see what happens going forward. Um, will the folks take advantage of that? And, um, what, what comes out of that? And then the other item I would want to point out is that, um, we have issued a certain kind of occupancy for the Mercedes-Benz Kansas City, so their new facility, it's on Sixth Seventh Street. Down in Bedieller, take a chance of Bedieller, it really looks nice, it is. Um, it's definitely changed that corner from, uh, the previous secretive, uh, large cube that was down there. So it definitely has really changed that corner. Um, Marion Grand Station continues to go well, and they continue to beat one time. Uh, and, and today, uh, spectrumers over there doing inspections on Building One, which somewhat, I mean, it's hard to understand, but that really is the building that's second in line over there on the apartment. So that's the, uh, Building One is the building that's on the west side. Uh, and then also, uh, undergrounding continues as weather permitting. Uh, just noticed today that the very large, um, boring, uh, operation that was going to happen on the library side, that's boring, that was boring underneath Shawnee Street Parkway to get to the south, to get to the other side of Shawnee Street Parkway. It must be all done and out. That was a separate contractor, the capital, um, electric, who was doing all the rest of the underground. So, uh, continues to go well. And then speaking of the library, the city is very close. Um, the camp, well, the last procedural step was the board of county commissioners approved it. So, um, we're very close to approve the contract with the city to buy the libraries. So we're very close to doing actual closing, we didn't talk to the person. That, um, happy to answer your questions.
Was there any, with the boring that you're done, was there any spare? There was four through, any spare conduits?
Um, actually, we have, um, I, the boring that was done underneath Shawnee Street Parkway, um, I think was quite large, a lot of multiple conduit to go through. We're also planned, uh, to have additional conduit that is essentially, um, dark conduit put into as part of our the project. So we have made plans, and we did work that to have additional conduit put in as part of this project.
So the conduits, that, those were electrical conduits, one under?
Yes.
Okay, so let me redirect this question. Was there an additional set of conduits in case those thirteen eight conduits blow up? And there was spare, be able to pull some cables?
Oh, for underneath that Shawnee Street Parkway, yeah. We just pull on your room to pull plenty of cable in that one that was underneath Shawnee Street Parkway.
Okay, there's.
Yeah, no, I. They, they, no, I, they, they made sure that they had the ability, if something went bad, they wouldn't have to go back through and redo it. And, and that's why I mentioned too far into, that's what a separate contractor did, was a very specialized operation.
Yeah, very specialized.
Dark conduit, uh, for usage in case future needs, uh, what, what, Diane, where was that? Just curious.
Brian, excuse me, do you know what's going to happen with Mercedes-Benz? Do you know?
We do. We have had conversations with them. And what they've indicated is that it will be their, like, pre-owned car, um, um, location. So they sell pre-owned cars, um, and they're going to really consolidate, and it's going to help their operations. And it's, it's going to help them, something like this. And they're also, also talking about putting in, um, a, maybe a, some of the collection of the prob, of the business owner in there. So some of their own items, for folks to see.
I have a question. It's more, uh, long-facing than the undergrounding. Um, I was wondering, with these, people, the tournament coming up in twenty-six, has there been any discussions in the city about, um, welcome visitors or expanding use ability for people to stay in town for the tournament?
Yeah, there, it is not, yes, there have been many conversations, um, with all the cities. So the Marion, city Marion is part of all the conversations, ranging from exactly the hospital, hospitality side of things. Um, and then also, the other big thing in conversation is transportation. And then also just general, uh, law enforcement and things like that. So the city Marion has been involved with all those conversations. And there's a number of different, um, committees and boards that folks are on. So yes, the city has been involved with all this.
Sean?
No, I, I won't answer my usual question. I think it falls in line with. I assume there are continuing conversations about a walkover across Shawnee Street Parkway.
Yeah, we, we continue to have, as, as we have conversations with anybody who's interested in doing development on our side, have those conversations of trying to facilitate pedestrian movement across, across, under, through, however it is, cross Shawnee Street Parkway.
On my lunch breaks at work, I've put together several interesting drawings.
Here, I was wondering if the boring had made a big enough hole for everybody to check stuff. That's my episode.
That would have been a good idea.
So, the old library. Is that totally knowledge before the ownership?
Yeah, that, that's been, been in the library. It's been on the, um, board of county commissioners' agenda. It certainly is.
Certainly, you know what we're talking about. Okay.
And just to be clear, just so everybody understands, the library, so we're talking, um, the actual building is on the hardcore, so that's the big building that the branch was actually. Uh, there is in between the old CBL, which is now the Possibilities Office Building, that faces on Sixth Second Terrace, and the Caribou, there's another building between those, that faces on the Slater's. That's also part of the library acquisition. And then on the west side of Slater, um, north of Chapultepec, there is a small parking lot. That's a little part of the library property. And then there's the large parking lot, um, it's also a parking that sits, um, behind Shell Station. That is also part of the library. Anything else? That's all I have. Thank you.
That's it? How's downtown going?
Uh, we, uh, the Corps of Engineers takes over. We have lots of meetings.
Yeah. So downtown meetings aren't going? Okay. Hmm, let's see. Let them take care of all the business, too. Okay. Who wants to be the leader for the unit, make a motion for adjournment? I move to begin the adjournment.
I'll second that.
We are adjourned.
You're on, you're getting ready to start on a adventure, it sounds like, huh?
Yeah.
It's fun. You've done it before?
You guys do, I don't know.
Okay.
Like, it's about build.
Yeah, are you building yourself, or are you gonna do?
Um, actually, it's a childhood friend of mine.
Okay.
Is my builder. Uh, I, I have background, yeah, Rick Mason.
Oh, nice.
His dad, and my dad, did an addition to the house that we have now. His, their childhood best friends grew up, his dad's a car firm, my dad's Rick Mason. When they were twenty, they did an addition to the house that we have now. Well, now, you know, we're the kids, we're all grown up, and we're gonna build the house next door. It's got.
So you're gonna build it yourself?
I'm actually, I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep Grandma's house and let it out, probably to the family member, and I'll.
Go Jews!
But, uh, and then I'm working on the, yeah.